My golly, right there board meeting in Hibbing School's quarter on October 18th, 2023 at 3:30 PM, David Sabin's time. With that, I'd like to welcome everyone here. And with that, we'll go to item two. Fledgled allegiance, please stand if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where Mr. stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item three. But before we move to the agenda, I'd like to welcome our room, two new student reps. Chris Patani, who's first, I guess, and Christian. Maybe we're on the board if you want. Can you read the names of everybody?
I can read those ones.
You see, I'm John Burg with the board chair. Mike Egan.
Sarah Gobarty.
Kathy, oh, go ahead. Oh, well, I'm Pam Rainey. I take the notes.
Kathy Nyberg.
Kimmy Blotman.
And I'm Al Teeter, the minister.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Yes.
That'd be a nice addition.
Chuck's name is upside down. Is it supposed to be?
Not on purpose.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That's kind of ominous.
I was just gonna say that, hope it's not an omen.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll go to item four. I mean, item four, approve the agenda.
So far.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Carrie, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The board, same sign? Motion carried, thank you. And Kathy's gonna be the clerk for three also. Thank you.
You're welcome. What else am I doing? You said signing.
That's part of the job.
Okay, good.
With that, we'll go to item. Item four, motion to approve the consent agenda. There's gonna be an addendum. Item B and W. And those, you know, we, B is to approve the hiring of Matthew Anderson as head boys coach, wrestling and assistant varsity boys wrestling coach, effective November 20th, 2023. Item W will be to approve the hiring of Ellis Wojcicki as head boys wrestling and assistant varsity boys wrestling co-coach, effective November 20th, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Chair will support. Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Chair Rickich. Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
The same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item five, public comment.
And I saw none, Mr. Chair. Double check, but I believe I saw none. Yes, that is correct.
Very good. That will go to item six, administrative reports. Anything from the directors?
This is maybe gonna be in the committee report, but I just was gonna say, so I've attended two of the leadership meetings. Mr. Eldridge, is that you there?
Yep.
And I just wanted to commend all the teachers that have been part of that committee because we had our latest meeting yesterday. And I just thought it was really nice. Number one, Mrs. McDonald does a really nice job of leading those meetings. But I really respect too that during those conversations, it's, you know, what's not working well, what's the struggle, what the reality of, you know, the position that we're put in as a district, as teachers, as principals, the hardship of the students. So it's not all, you know, just the good. They really discuss the things that they truly want to be better. And some of that stuff is, you know, ugly and struggling, but they work through it together. Everybody participates, and I just think that they do a really nice job about that. And the goal setting, I love hearing about that because everybody has a little piece of input of, you know, why they should bump it up this way or look at this, other options. It isn't just a let's just check the box activity. They really set these to the students to be successful as well as reaching, you know, the goals.
No, I just agree a hundred percent. And, you know, this, this is my fifth year here, and I'm amazed every day on how professional and caring our staff are. They truly are good people, and we're lucky to have them. Later on, when we talk about contracts and approving contracts, right, that's a little bit of a pat on the back to our employees for the great work that they do. So I really appreciate your comment, and I'm gonna share that with the other committee members when we meet again. I think it's important that they know that you're supportive of them.
I mean, I'm on there. I never say anything. I'm not there to contribute, but I am listening. I am, you know, taking it all in. But I remember asking Mr. Berg after our first meeting, you know, as a new board member or board members, like, what can we do to help them? You know, sure, we can be in those calls, those meetings, but really, what can we do to support them? And one of the things that he said to me was, you know, back us up when we say this is what we need, you know, bring it to the board of, you know, taking our side on, you know, we may need a little help in one area to support that, so.
What's the committee called again?
This is the leadership.
And who all is on, like, how many people are on it?
I think there was about nine or 12 on the call.
Yeah, and sometimes it can be as many as 20, there's reps.
Is it like the department heads or what is it?
World's Best Workforce.
Oh, World's Best Workforce.
Well, it's many different items, actually. I mean, that's a piece of it, but it's a district leadership team. So it's really about, it's about having leadership be shared.
Yeah.
Rather than everything just being talked down.
So is it admin?
It's admin.
All the admin or?
It depends. I mean, yesterday, I think there was a representative from every building on. And then there's teachers from every building on. It's just, it's a work group.
It's a work group.
And Carrie does this great job of keeping everybody on task and driving forward. We don't get bogged down in side conversations. It's, she just does a great job, so.
Well, yeah, I believe that.
Yeah.
Is that, John and I used to be on the World's Best Workforce? So that's part of that.
Well, yeah, and this was driven by the World's Best Workforce, but it plans our PLCs.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's lots of decisions that come from that group, so.
How often do they meet?
Once a month.
Yeah, once a month or so.
That's pretty often.
Sometimes more often, depending on what's going on.
That's nice that there was good discussion and problem solving.
Thanks for your input, that was good.
I just had one comment, John.
Sure.
As a director. I don't care for the new consent agenda, the way we do it. I don't. It's just, it wipes out the whole meeting, like, there's no discussion on anything. I, I'm just gonna put that out there, that's all.
I appreciate that.
That's just my.
And we can take it back to the full order, but if there's any items on there, you can always take them out for a discussion.
I know, it's just there's so many on there that I'm, I don't know. I just don't care for it.
I would concur. I just feel like we need to be more transparent, give an opportunity to have discussion so not only we can have the discussion, but so the community is more positive for us.
Yeah.
There's some pretty, there's a lot of work that went into this agenda, this consent agenda.
There is, and it's just like we whipped, we washed right over it all. It's important stuff, so.
Well, the next meeting, we'll have a full board, and we will all have comments, maybe go back to the way it was, but that's what we're doing.
And I missed, I was looking through that file when we went through, but I do have a question on what we just approved, and I'm not disapproving it, but, so, when it comes to the wrestling, we, I knew we were losing Mr. Pierce. So are, usually, you know, when we've lost one coach, no big deal, there's reasons for that, but we're losing a lot in one sport. Is there anything behind that causing or driving that?
I think a lot of the, when Mr. Pierce is hired, he picks his staff.
Okay.
So a lot of the staff that was, were loyal to him.
Sure.
So the, with this situation, the plan would be, there would be two more assistant positions that we would, that we'd be still trying to fill. So that should be coming here. And the season starts in a little over a month, so we still have a little time. And I think these, you know, now that we have head coaches in place, they'll be a part of that discussion on who their assistants are and be able to help pick them, so.
Sure.
So it's co-coaches, huh?
It is, and it's, what we did is, one of the individuals was really interested in being more of an assistant. I think both were kind of thinking about being more of an assistant.
That's what I had heard, yeah.
But we, we talked about being able to kind of share that load and share the responsibility. And with Mr. Anderson, I think Mr. Wojcicki is very experienced and knowledgeable in the background of wrestling, so he'll be able to guide him and help him. And the goal, I think, the plan is, hopefully, Mr. Anderson is our coach, maybe next year, and Mr. Wojcicki will take a step back after mentoring him and helping him kind of figure the role out. If, if his wife will out.
You mean mother-in-law?
Coaching two sports is a full-time job.
Being a football coach, he's, he's really had a lot, and so I was kind of surprised to see this.
Do we know, is the, are the numbers large in wrestling?
Wojcik told me, I just was talking to Wojcik at, you know, just on the internet type thing. And I said, are there a lot of players? And he said, like, 10. That seems way low.
Oh, that seems very low.
But maybe he meant of the older kids, I don't know.
Are you gonna continue the girls program?
Yes.
Who's coaching that?
That's, hasn't been determined yet. So I talked with Mr. Turner about that today. We do still have an assistant coach, Mr. Rybichek, that was coaching the girls. And I, I don't know what his status is, but that's the next step here.
But he didn't resign? He wasn't one of them?
He, we've never accepted a resignation.
From him? So we still have him?
Yes.
And are we still looking for a JV head coach for girls hockey?
I think it was on here.
Well, it says.
Tony Kerkhendurk.
That's, he's an assistant.
Of course, assistant varsity.
And then Kristy Fairchild is as a junior varsity girls coach. It didn't say, you know, assistant head or.
Do we have an assistant junior varsity coach normally?
I thought last year we did. Kristen Sunball was, she resigned.
So we have a head and an assistant? Head and an assistant on varsity and junior varsity?
Yeah, so I just wasn't sure, because it didn't, I didn't want to assume that Kristy was the head varsity, because it didn't say, but maybe that's what this is meant for? I don't know. Because it's just a, a head coach or a varsity coach? I don't know.
It says a. It says a.
Yeah. So I wasn't sure.
I will find out for you. I will, I will find out exactly where we're at.
Because I mean, hockey season's right around the time.
Yes, yes. I'll find out where we're at.
Okay, thank you. With that, Eddie, you have any?
I, I heard that she, I think she is the head junior varsity coach.
Because she is.
The head, because you are a hockey player.
I used to be that.
Used to be.
So she's the head.
Okay.
I will, yes.
But I do believe you.
That is what I've heard from a few people, that she will be the head JV coach.
Christian, you have any comments or anything you'd like to add?
Not a great one.
Still learning experience.
Do they have reports for us in general or not?
Sometimes you would.
Who you guys today?
Anything that you want to share?
About the high school, any activities, anything you want to say?
I can speak on the choir trip, if I would be honest, if you want to do that at the end, I can do that.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and do that before we vote, maybe? Or when do you want it, John?
Well, you can talk right now, that's where we, this, we're student directors too.
Okay. So I know that the vote for the choir trip is happening today, but I just wanted to give a little reaffirmation on it before you vote. So I think it's gonna be a really educational and valuable experience for everyone. I'm a member of the choir, and currently I'm signed up to go. But for me personally, the most important part is gonna be visiting Pearl Harbor, because that's gonna be one of our stops we go to. And I think there's just so much historic value to the trip, but also cultural value, because not many people get the opportunity to go to Hawaii, let alone high school students. So I think it's a very good cultural opportunity and historical opportunity. We are getting quite a bit of singing there. We're scheduled to participate with another Hawaiian choir, actually, and do a song with them. But we have two songs prepared. We're working on Somewhere Over the Rainbow for a Hawaiian song and God Bless the USA for Pearl Harbor. So they both have a many mashup songs. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be an awesome experience if we get the chance to go, so I think it'd be really valuable to have as a part of the choir trip for this year.
Thank you. Quite a few people in there, too. That's a good deal.
John, may I ask the two student reps what activities they're involved in in school?
Sure.
What activities are you involved in in school?
Um, I've played hockey until this year.
Okay.
And then this is what I'm doing, this is another activity.
Okay, so are you a senior?
I am, yes.
Okay.
So I'm also a senior, but I'm in Key Club Northern Lights. So a bachelor player. I think that's a pursuit of all activities, and a few other things.
Are you on student council, either of you?
No.
You're not? Thank you.
Very good. With that, we'll move to item B, administrative consent.
Yes, we have Mrs. Fusco and Tyler Glad here, and Mrs. Fusco is going first, I believe.
Yep. Okay, so just a quick little update from the Early Learning Center, my first year there, but.
Can I just, can I stop really quick? Just, just so the board, can you just describe your role and just, you know?
Sure.
Where do you show up every morning and what do you do, basically?
So I work at the Early Learning Center. My position is called the Assistant Principal of the Washington Early Learning Center, but basically what I do is just run the Early Learning Center. So that's where I show up every day, that's where, you know, I deal with kids there every day, good and bad, not too bad, but it's very, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but off to a great start this year. There's been, it's just ran so smoothly, there's been very few issues throughout the year. It seems like you've already been there for six months, and it's only been six weeks. So the improvements from the first day of school till now are like huge, so it's going very nice. And Kathy was there one day for pickup, and she thought it went pretty smoothly as well.
I mean, it's really a great system. I mean, it's a whole pickup, the parking lot, how the cars come in, and then how the parents wait, and then they open the door, and then the parents move forward, and you sign a sheet, and then the names are announced on a microphone by a teacher. She says, Teddy, come, you know, your pickup's here, whatever. And it's just smooth. It's amazing. It's like a machine.
It is. And that staff, all the teachers were there last year, and I'll tell you that I would not be able to do what I do without them. So the staff is great, all the parents are great, everyone there is great. The office staff is great. We all work together as just a team that just flows like it should. So very well fueled there, so. Yeah, okay. So back in the beginning of September, Mr. Ricker, an old teacher from high school, wanted, had a teacher thing at the high school here, and they wanted to have a tour of the different sites. So they came to the Early Learning Center that afternoon, about eight of them were came. Most of them I knew, I did not know all of them, but, so they wanted to see the Early Learning Center, gave them a tour of that, the Head Start area, the gym, the Commons, the whole shebang. Then some of them were ex-teachers from the Washington, so can we go into the Washington too? So they went to the Washington, and some of that has been redone since they were there as well. They just loved going into their old building and were, I don't know how many times, they said, thank you so much for coming, thank you so much for doing this on your Saturday, very appreciative of it, and just couldn't get over how gorgeous and nice the Early Learning Center is, and just the openness and how the design of it was. But yeah, so that was fun to have all of them there and do that. So that was early on in the year. Enrollment at the Early Learning Center this year, we have four classrooms of Ready Set Go, and they have 18 in three of them, and 17 in one of those classes. Each class can hold 20, so we're, but we could have nine more kids, but right now, you know, there's still enrollees coming in, and we are taking them as long as they were four by September 1st, so kind of the same guidelines as kindergarten. And then this year, there is two half-day programs. Last year, there was only one, so we call it the three-school, because there is some three-year-olds, but there are some four-year-olds in them as well, if their parents only wanted them to go for half a day. 10 to 10:40, there's one session, and then 12 to 2:30, there's another session. And there is 28 kids involved in the three-school. So we have about 99 kids, about 18 of them are already district kids, so.
Nandi, can I, so you open enrollment to our district, you're saying? And how many, approximately, how many Head Start students? 60-ish or so?
60-ish, I think, was the last number there.
Okay. So about 160 kids in the building on a given day, roughly?
Yeah.
Okay.
This year at the Early Learning Center, we added a position, so the students would have one class they went to each day for their specialist. Last year, they went to a specialist, but it was different every day, and it was very, it was too much transition for the kids, so having a different specialist every day. So this year, we hired Ms. Ally, Ally Sandberg, she comes from Cook. The kids in the Ready Set Go classroom, so the all-day classroom, school there every day for a 42-minute class period in the morning. And she works on all kinds of different things with them, from social skills to art to girls' and bike motor skills. She goes in the gym and does like, mazes with them and different things like that, try to get them moving and doing different things like that. So the kids have loved to go to their, in the Washington side of it, so they think that's cool too, except to go over to the Washington side a little bit, but. So she has been a good addition to our staff. She works well with the kids. She has just done her job great. And then in the afternoons, she's, so she's there till 11:30, and then she's with us in the afternoons to have sub in our schools. She subs in either our school or the Washington school, so she's there all day. She helps with morning duties, busing duties, anything you ask her, she's willing to do. So that is a good addition to our program as well. And last night, just, we had our first family engagement night. So we have a, we worked with the, is it called Kirk Parent Advisory? Parent Advisory Committee, and we have a core team that needs with our, from the Early Learning Center, and we planned our first family engagement night. We invited Head Start as well, and we had, the name was Magic Bob, I think his name was, came from. He comes up and does like adult disabilities and different things too, so he has been here before. And we had about 50-ish people last night, so I just took a few pictures of what went on last night. The kids loved it, the parents had a great time, and he did some cool stuff. There were some older kids there that wished there was more Magic, they told us, but it was four, four and under, but obviously, families came and brought older siblings with us, so. That was our first family engagement night, and then we'll meet again here soon to plan another one around Christmas time. So, and this goes along with kindness counts, and today we had that unity day and all the kindness stuff, so it actually played out very well, not fun that way, but. Another thing that we started in at the Early Learning Center is a good news call. So if a staff member or anyone recognizes a kid doing something that they need to be recognized for, maybe they're working on something, or maybe they just helped someone, and they're usually not like that, they email me, call me, and then I will go and get the student, bring the student back to my office, and call the parents, and just be like, here, you know, I have so-and-so with me, and they're always like, oh, gosh, what did he do? I'm like, no, nothing bad. Like, so this is a good news call. And the student gets to hear me talk to their parent, and we talk about other things, and play some little puppets in my office for a while, think it's pretty cool, and then take their picture with parent consent. Tiff decorated this nice little bulletin board in the commons area that Tyler let us put up there, and so once they get their picture taken, parent consent, can hang it on the bulletin board in the commons area there, and then also send it to social media with parent consent, so that the kids can get some advertising for that. So you, I just got the bulletin board up and just put the pictures up not too long ago, and you should see those kids' faces when they first saw. So they thought that was pretty cool, and they get to see their pictures out there. So that was fun, even doing that, so I encourage the staff to continue to do that. And then like Sarah was talking about, this just goes back to our leadership committee meeting yesterday. We have talked and looked at data and scores from last year in the areas that the Early Learning Center is focusing in, mostly social and emotional learning, and all like the areas for the four-year-olds. They met most of their goals last year, except for in social and emotional learning, so we're really working on that this year. That's why with Ms. Ally, she's vetting second step in term learning, as well as teachers at the social-emotional curriculum. So we're just gonna be naming new goals for this year to maintain, or of course, to grow in the social-emotional area. That was something I did at my leadership committee meeting. And then just continued to working on building relationships with the staff and students. And I have had many meetings and chats with Head Start and just trying to collaborate more with them and making sure we all feel as one whole family there. So I think that is all I have for you. Questions on anything?
I have a question, and this is perfect timing, I didn't realize I was gonna be here, but on our memorandum of understanding between Head Start and Hibbing Schools, and maybe you don't have to answer it today, but.
Okay.
One of the things that we work on jointly is recruiting for enrollment on both sides. We help them and they help us. So I'm just kind of curious, like, what that looks like, what that means, and how we.
Well, I know, well, and I think that's part of what we're working on, and Mr. Eldridge can step in, but last year, I think there was some talk, but not much communication going on, and then sometimes we have Head Start students moving into the Ready Set Go classrooms, so then, of course, we communicate about that, and then Ready Set Go students moving to the Head Start. So I know we work like that in trying to make sure we get all the information pertaining to that student, if we have a shared student, or if they went one program last year, moving to the other program the next year. And then I think just working together to include each of us in their family events, so that parents know we're working together too, I think, as most.
And I think another piece of this too is that if they, if they have a student that comes in to register for Head Start, but might not meet their qualifications or not qualify, then they'll recommend, well, there's, well, there's an opening at the Early Learning Center, and vice versa, right? If there's, depending on the circumstances. So we work together that way too.
Yeah, exactly.
And I appreciate that, because I think as a board, when we approve the addition of the Early Learning Center, I mean, that's an important part of it, is making sure that we can try to attract as many students as we can, so working together, I really appreciate that.
I had a question about the, you said the meeting, the most needed area is the social-emotional learning, and you said that was from test results?
Well, and that was, they, yes.
What kind of test?
So, not test results, assessments. So they do TS Gold, and the teachers do TS Gold assessments throughout the year with them, and that's just the area that was marked as one of the lower areas.
So they do that on every child?
Yep.
They do kind of an assessment, and that was the area that stood out?
Yeah.
For all of them?
Yeah.
All the teachers?
Yeah.
No surprise, I guess?
No. Well, they don't make them sit down and like do an assessment, it's more like.
So teachers.
Observations.
Teacher observations.
Yes, teacher observations, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Glad.
Thank you, Andy. Chair members of the board, thank you for having me. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but I do have some updates. We had a lot of little projects going on this summer. One of the bigger ones, of course, was here at the high school with the tuck pointing and building restoration company. I'm sure you noticed all the lifts parked around the outside of the building still. Basically, starting in June, they started on the. the outside of the building still. Um, basically, starting in June, they started on the north side and washed the exterior of the building from the top all the way down to the bottom. Washed, re-tuck-pointed, made a ton of necessary repairs just to help us keep watertight. Um, again, that was something that hadn't been done since 2006, so it was, it was much needed. It was, it was time for it to be done. Um, yeah, they're, they're, they're down to the final last week or so. They're waiting on some brick on the south end right now that, uh, that they have to match in order to finish that up. Once they're done there, they're just gonna do their punch list and, and call it a year. Um, along with washing and re-tuck-pointing, we also redid the granite steps out front. We cleaned those, re-tuck-pointed those, um, ground down and sandblasted the front railings, repainted those to brighten those up a bit, that, something that had been done prior to 2006. So, again, much needed. Um, excuse me. Also, we widened and replaced all the front sidewalks at the front of the building, um, basically wrapping all the way around. So, uh, went from five-foot sidewalk to eight-foot sidewalk.
That was really nice.
Yeah.
What's the deal with that?
I suppose I'll take the credit for it. Uh, no, it was, they were really deteriorated, and, um, especially for winter snow plowing, our trucks will be able to stay on the, on the sidewalks now.
Yeah. It's really nice to have eight-foot sidewalks.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
For all the traffic they get, it's much needed. Um, so yeah, they're, they're gonna finish the, like I said, finish up on the back end there, and I do plan to have them back over the next couple summers to do the same type of work at all of the rest of our buildings as well. So, um, they were a really good crew to work with. Um, oh, to Cheever, Cheever, um, we're still, still learning how everything works, basically, um, with all the added programming and responsibilities. Um, there's different activities now every day, so, um, we got a guy out there that basically starts in the morning and finishes up by noon, and, and it's ready to go for whatever activity we have going. Um, over the summer, we did install, um, security cameras for the facility. Um, along with that, we straightened up, removed, replaced a ton of the fencing out there, just to make things look a heck of a lot better than they did. Um, and, uh, also, we made some small improvements for like the track team, the soccer team, um, added some gates, added some fencing, made the, made the, um, jumping pits a little bit bigger. Um, so that'll help those guys as well. Um, our crew also, same thing, they've, uh, we've had so much new equipment that we've been putting together out there. It's just, uh, it's an almost an everyday thing, so they're still trucking away with that stuff. Uh, that's all coming to an end, though. Sounds like our last football game possibly is tonight, um, must be get a home playoff game or something, so see what happens. But, um, we also received those, installed the new lockers out at Cheever, uh, for the home side. We epoxied the floor, cleaned it up really nice, got those installed. They were donated by U.S. Steel. Quarterback Club went out and chased a bunch of money, and they, and they got it. So, um, basically got about forty thousand dollars worth of lockers for, for nothing. So all we had to do was install, coordinate the delivery and setup and install. So, um, plan on doing the same thing to the other side of the locker rooms fall as well, um, get the lockers in, get them set up so it can be used as well. And then, um, next summer.
When will that be, Tyler? Excuse me?
This fall. We still plan on doing that.
This, right now?
Yeah.
You're gonna still get the other side of the lockers?
Yeah, we have them. They're in one of the storage containers out there, so we'd like to get.
They bought those?
Uh, the U.S. Steel.
They bought both sides?
Yep, they bought seventy-five, I think, total, and we only put forty on the, the home side, and we're gonna put the rest of them on the other side.
Because their donation was like thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, yep. They paid for all the lockers, covered all the lockers.
Yeah, but I, I thought it was only for the one, the front of the locker room. It's gonna be the back, too.
Both sides, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so that'll be nice. It'd be good to see that get taken care of.
Right.
Um, also, next summer out there, we're gonna, we're gonna open up the track to, for community access. Um, don't know exactly what that's gonna look like yet completely, but we're gonna plan on having it open Monday through Friday, no holidays, just during our working hours, so people, the community members can go out there and use it, run on it, walk on it. Um, I know we've had a lot of questions regarding that, so hopefully we can help them out and accommodate the community as well. Um, otherwise, now that school's underway and those things are wrapping up, um, we're already working on next year's list, you know, some of those bigger things are, um, of course, roof sections that we got at, at all the buildings, basically pool renovations between the high school and the Lincoln, um, and the Cheever Owens Field House, we plan on doing, doing a complete remodel up there this summer, so. Um, along with all the other little projects, that's, that's what we're working on, and we'll keep at it.
So at Cheever, are, are you doing the concession, a redo of that hall?
The concession stand, concession stand, bathrooms, the press box, yeah, all of that.
You're making the concession bigger?
We'd like to, yeah. We're still not set on which footprint we're gonna use, but that's the goal, yes.
Do you work with ARI and design all that?
Um, we have, yep, yep. ARI, and Winseth is their new name, so.
Winseth?
Winseth is their new name.
Oh, I didn't know that.
They, they merged with another company, so.
Did the bathroom that got vandalized out at Cheever get fixed?
Yes.
So it can be opened?
Yes. Yep, that new door was installed maybe two weeks ago. I want to say the new door unlocked was installed about two weeks ago.
And this isn't anything that you talked about it, but I, but since you're here, it sparked my memory to ask. Um, I remember getting an email about the positioning of the new sign.
Electronics?
Yes. Did, did we ever figure out exactly where that's gonna go, or is that?
Oh, for the high school, high school talking.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I jumped from the Cheever field to, to this.
We, we kind of put it on the back burner for now, just to make sure we can take care of everything else we have on the list that pertains to the buildings, and, um, so hopefully we can look at that again in a year or two.
Oh, so it's down there?
It was, it was, you know, one of the things that just, when we started down those paths, you're talking about it, the price tag just grew and grew and grew, and I think the last time we looked, it was nearly a hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, more than that.
More than a hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, it was like a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to be complete, so we just, like Mr. Aldrich said, it just, pretty sure we can use the funds of it elsewhere right now.
Well, we had this great donation from Jim Hindrickson, right, and, and, and it was a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars, and I just, to have three-quarters of it, or maybe more, gold, I, I wanted to just pump the brakes a little bit and just see if that's the best decision.
And I know, too, um, we have Fall Ball, that is for the school that's coming up next, not this, uh, weekend, but the following, and I know that puts extra work on your crew, so I wanted to say thank you in advance, because I know it's a little bit more cleaning for them, but, um, you know, we do need their help and we do appreciate their help, so I just wanted to throw that out.
And I was gonna say the same, Tyler. The schools, the grounds, all the schools, our facilities, they look amazing. So to you and your crew, great.
Of course, we, we, we're very fortunate. I, I've been wanting to say this for a while to you guys, especially that we have, our maintenance and studio staff, they, they do, they take pride in it. You know, they, they really do that. They'll do it a little bit extra without worrying about getting paid, or if it's not in their area, or they just always go above and beyond. Um, I can't thank them enough, because it makes me look good, makes you guys look good, makes everybody look good, you know, so, um, yes, a big shout-out to them. Um, if you see them, tell them thank you.
And I like that you sent that email about, um, and I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman who's retiring, but I thought it was really nice to throw that out there. And I can see that, you know, we have those loyal employees who do stick with us, what was it, twenty, over twenty-seven years?
Twenty-eight years, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, to me, I think that's amazing. Um, and I sent him a little note, too, but I just think it's nice when that comes from the direct, you know, who they directly report to, that recognition throughout the whole district. It's employees like that, regardless of your position, but that stay that long, that really make an impact and lasting impressions. So that was nice to hear you do.
Lots of knowledge, we, with Jace today. You know, congratulations to him, that's his last day today, so, yeah.
Yeah, you sure have a good crew right now.
I do, I do. I'm, I'm very fortunate.
It's impressive.
Yeah.
Thank you so much to them and you.
Thank you, thank them, absolutely. So.
Good report, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
With that, we move to the committee report. Just one thing I have, there's our collaborative committee, we'll be reading on Monday the twenty-third at eleven AM.
And I was just gonna echo kind of what Sarah said, sitting in on, um, the meeting yesterday. Honest to God, our, our administrators and staff, I'm sitting there, I was just really impressed, and the way they're just so sincere and passionate about making improvements and already looking forward to building goals for next year, and it's amazing.
That's very important, very nice of us. Okay, with that, we move to item seven, administrative business. Sir Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I may as a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations, including six hundred dollar donation from Owen's family, charitable, to support their softball, two hundred and fifty dollar donation from the Beverly Melts Club to support Sarah Nelson's sewing class, fifty dollar donation from Bird Sports to support In-N-Out, fifty dollars from the Bird Control Report and Company PA to support Safety Club, and one hundred dollars from Knights of Columbus to support Safety Club.
So, support.
Move by Director Gwarty, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hold same sign. Thank you, and thank the people for their donation.
NMB is a motion to approve the MOU between ISD number seven oh one and ADE-OA to the purpose of supporting mutually beneficial activities of the parties involved to provide better services for children and families served from July one, two thousand twenty-three to June thirty of two thousand twenty-four.
So moved. Support.
Support by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
I, I just wanna kind of spin up what Mandy's presentation. I think this is an amazing agreement and what's behind it. So I appreciate all the work that goes into, into executing it, making it happen, and benefiting the kids and the district. I think it's very.
Very good, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the assurance of compliance of state and federal law for prohibited discrimination and to direct the superintendent to submit the report as provided by Minnesota statutes and rules.
So moved. Support.
Move by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
NMB is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between ISD number seven oh one and the Hibbing United Educators for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirty of two thousand twenty-five.
So moved. Support.
Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
NMB is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between ISD number seven oh one and the American Federation State County Municipal Employees Council sixty-five for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirty of two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Support. Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item F is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between ISD number seven oh one and the Hibbing Administrative Unit for the period July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved. Support.
Move by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item G is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between ISD number seven oh one and the Hibbing Confidential Unit for the period July one, twenty-three through June thirty of two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Move by Director Gwarty, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item H is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between ISD number seven oh one and the Hibbing Online Unit for the period July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirty of two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Support. Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Not discussion, I just wanna say, uh, congratulations to our administration staff, our teachers, and everybody else that's been involved. This is something you won't see. I mean, this, this is pretty amazing, I mean, to get all of this done as fast and as well as you have done, so congratulations.
I'll never do it this way again, Mr. Egan. Four contracts at the same time, not a, not a good idea.
Yeah, well, you handled it well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for saying that, because that was when we tell the agents, congratulate everyone, hold same sign. Been twenty years on it.
I'm a late speaker, but.
There's those things to treat it, too. I mean, I can just imagine the amount of work that goes into this.
And Pam. Pam also is responsible for the aster contract and those changes, so yes, it's a ton of work.
And it was smooth, everyone's straightforward, you fill it like it is, and knows it's a big thing.
A big thing, yeah. Um, is there any way we could combine any of these units, like the admin with the, um, non-aligned or?
I would say no.
Confidential, or is, there's so many different units.
And they're so, they're so unique.
They are?
Now, the admin unit is, is really driven by the licensure that they hold.
Okay.
There's some state statutes.
Yes.
And the non-aligned is the non-licenced, or like?
Alex.
Head people, that's what I'm saying. And they can't go in with the administrator?
They, no, I don't know that they couldn't, but I, it's, you know, it's based more on the licensure that they hold and the credentials, I think. But, and, and also the, how, how they would retire under like benefit, if they're PRA, if they're TRA, if they're.
Oh, is that what it's based on?
That, that drives some of it, too, yes.
I've always thought we'd have so many different units that.
I, I agree. I'm not arguing with you. I would love to have.
And they all set, they all end up settling for the same percent, correct?
Well, and that's kind of, yeah, we try to guide that.
Subtle difference, subtle differences.
Maybe a few, yeah.
You're right, but it could be one in Berlin.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice, but whatever.
Not gonna happen like that, Michael.
Or mine, probably.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item I is a motion to approve the pay increase for fourteen-hour group rates from fourteen dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour effective October first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved. Support.
Move by Director Egan, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, I remember, again, I'm sorry, I don't recall the names, but I remember the lady who came and spoke about this, and I appreciated her coming to, I mean, it, it, to me, it helps when they kind of come and kind of make their own case, and the reason why they're asking for it or like it, and, um, and you then to support that, so I, I think this is, was the right thing to do for them.
Especially nowadays, with the inflation rate and those prices that are going up and jobs, it's, the way the world is, and our fourteen-hour aides, I mean, we couldn't operate without them. I mean, they're, they're essential to everything we do here day-to-day. So.
And sixteen certainly is not like that long, you know. Like you say, they could get a job probably other places in town.
Yes, yes.
So many of them are still committed to it.
They are.
And that's the important part.
Appreciate their effort.
I think it was, um, Lisa Rosati.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't acknowledged it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And finally, item J is a motion to approve the spring choir trip to Hawaii in March of two thousand twenty-four.
This is for Christian. Move by Director Egan, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion?
I'm very excited for this, and I agree with everything you said.
Yeah.
Spiritual, cultural, musical, every.
What'd be great is when you come back, because you're a part of this meeting now, you can come back and do a little presentation yourself.
Yeah.
Owen, did you ever say aye?
Aye.
I wanted to get that in here quickly before anybody. Okay, thank you very much. Good item eight. Discussion items, superintendent.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Nothing there. With that, we move to our clerk, which normally does a.
I have two things to be honest with you. One, is that meeting still on the twenty-fifth?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Right here in this room.
Oh, not in the auditorium?
No, they, they, they changed it. I, I thought it was gonna be all of our students. I thought it was gonna be a big presentation. They narrowed it down to about twenty people. Some student council, they picked some staff members, but I believe the board, if you can, should it can.
What, what meeting is this?
This is, we have chairs from legislative committees that are coming on by tour. I'll send you another invite with the correct times and locations.
MDE school funding here at twelve o'clock to twelve forty.
Yes.
What did you say it's gonna be in a boardroom?
It's gonna be in this room.
And that's, okay, twelve o'clock on the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
I will, I'll send you another email or invite, so you got the right information.
Okay, the other thing on ten twenty-five is Kim and I are co-chairing the happy birthday, happy hundredth birthday to Hibbing High School celebration.
Okay.
Okay.
Kim and I are. And our first meeting is 5 o'clock in the cafeteria on 10:25. So anyone that's interested in helping out, being involved, whatever.
What time?
Okay, 5:00 PM on Wednesday, the 25th, in the cafeteria. So all interested parties in this room, or if you know someone, you know, go ahead and invite them to come to that first planning meeting. So...
My other thing, and I, I sent something to Mr. Turner, but I didn't really ask questions about it. But there was an article in the paper regarding some schools in the cities that have a class for, you know, reffing all sorts of sports activities. And I know that we're running into an issue with some of our athletics where you don't have the referees. And the people, you know, when the base of the world retired, you know, who, who is on our bench to fill those spots? And I don't know the Minnesota High School league rules or what we can, cannot do. But I thought the article was really interesting called "They in School Teaching Class for Students," and it gives them then, and I just was wondering if that's maybe something that we could look through, you look at either doing as an elective or even just through community ed or what that looks like. Because I think it would be killing two birds with one stone.
That's a great idea.
And it could be football, hockey, volleyball, softball, I mean, everything out of the set.
That's a really good idea.
So I believe, and I'll, I'll check, but I think Mrs. Sikora is already on this.
Okay.
She mentioned it at an admin meeting a couple weeks ago, but I'll, I'll check on that. But I, I think she's already, this is the plan for one of our academies.
Oh, great.
Probably the teaching and learning piece to...
And I didn't even think to include her in that email that I sent to Mr. Turner. I just sent it to him being the AD.
But I will, yes, and I agree. I mean, I think we're doing that. I mean, like what Kirk and the community ed program have done with swimming, right? They basically found people, got them certified to be lifeguards so we could have a swimming program. He, he created the, the people that were trained. And we had, I believe we had the same conversation in an admin meeting, didn't we Kirk, about the reffing class with Mrs. Sikora? But, but I will, I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
And the whole board. Because that, yes, I think that is a great idea. And we struggle. I mean, this year has been terrible. Soccer officials, just any official, and that, they're really dictating the price that they'll come for. They cancel at the last minute because they might get $200 at Northwoods where we're paying $160. So we've had lots of last-minute cancellations on officials, which, just the pool isn't there. There, there just isn't people to drop them. So yes, creating our own pool, build your own, I think that's, that's the way to do it.
I think they're just teaching a class at the college, I think. I probably think it, but it's a, but it's a college class and I think it's for credit. So it's a different population.
Yeah.
But still, content should be something similar, you'd think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And hockey does a great job of that. They, they find the young kids to ref, they get them trained and they pay them a decent wage so they come and do it. So...
Do they do a lot of hockey at the Hall of Fame?
Yes.
But just to be aware, the, the kids that would be taking the officiating class in high school are not gonna be the ones that are gonna be doing it. They're private end football players. The state high school requires them to be licensed in a certain age. So I think this is more geared towards C squad down or some of the youth. And then from there, they can, as they get older, they'll replace the veins of the world.
Yes. Very good. Okay. Without objection, the meeting is observed, adjourned, observed to 4:22. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming.